Good morning. Let's pray together. Our Father, we thank you for yet another day. And as we enter this fall season, Lord, we have some blessings on not only our great county, but all the people that live here and serve here. So, Lord, today we need a fresh dose of grace and wisdom for what's before us. So, we look to thee from whence cometh our help and ask you to bless us in this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
Good morning. I'd like to call and lead the order. We will begin with the proclamation and recognition, employees' years of service recognition presented by Holly Lockertain, HR Director.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, pillars of the community. Thank you for allowing us to present a video today to recognize years of service awards. I have with me today Mr. Timothy Brooks with HR that will help me with the presentations.
On behalf of Henry County, we would like to recognize employees who are celebrating years of service. Those being recognized celebrate their work anniversaries in October for either their five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, or 30-plus years with Henry County. We ask that those employees being recognized come forward when their name is called to receive their certificate and ask them to remain in the front for a group photo with the board. We ask that the audience hold your applause until all employees from each group have been announced. Those celebrating five years of service in October 2025 include Amory Moore with Economic Development, Brandon Garland with the Henry County Sheriff's Office, Elizabeth Turner, the Henry County Tax Commissioner's Office, Emily Alexander with the Henry County Police Department, Frederick Ramsen with Henry County Stormwater, Jocelyn Tobias with the Henry County Solicitor General's Office, Sherrell Shealy with the Department of Building and Plan Review, Suzette Gray with the Clerk of Superior Court's Office, and Thomas Perry with Henry County Department of Transportation. Employees celebrating 10 years of service in October 2025 include Charles Escudon, Henry County Tax Assessor's Office, Donna McDonald with the Accountability Courts, Jacob Perez, Henry County Tax Assessor's Office. Those celebrating 15 years of service in October 2025 include Richard Lunion with the Henry County Police Department, Stephanie Braun, Henry County Clerk's Office. October 2005 was a busy month of hiring for Henry County Fire Rescue. Today, we celebrate and recognize a number of employees who have reached their 20 years with Henry County. Those fire rescue employees include Andrew Hand, Andrew Jones, Brenton Cochran, Brown Avera, Christopher Lunsford, Destin Mills, Eric Roberts, Frank Robinson, James Gullian. Employees celebrating 25 years of service in October 2025 include Joel Strickland, Henry County Facilities Maintenance. Mr. Strickland was hired on October 16, 2000 as a building maintenance technician two and is currently a facility superintendent as of July 1, 2024. Sherry Smith, Henry County 911. Ms. Smith was hired on October 23, 2000 as a senior clerk with the Purchasing Department and is currently an administrative assistant three as of March 19, 2012. Today, we recognize two employees who are celebrating more than 30 years of service with Henry County in October 2025. Joseph Smith, Henry County Police Department, celebrating 31 years. Deputy Police Chief Smith was hired on October 10, 1994 as a non-certified police officer and is currently serving as deputy police chief as of August 5, 2024. Cooper Keller, Henry County Tax Assessor's Office, celebrating 35 years. Mr. Keller was hired as a cartographer on October 4, 1990 and now serves as a deputy chief appraiser as of August 7, 2017. With immense gratitude, Henry County extends a heartfelt thanks to you for your unwavering dedication and exceptional contribution.
Thank you, Chair, Board.
Next item on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That will be presented by Amber Smith.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. It is an honor to present to the public today a proclamation recognizing the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas in 2025, an estimated 316,950 women and 2,800 men in the United States will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, with an additional 59,080 women diagnosed with non-invasive breast cancer. And whereas the most recent national data shows that more than 42,000 women in the United States died from breast cancer in a single year, underscoring the ongoing need for prevention, early detection, access to timely, high-quality care in life-saving research. And whereas the U.S. Preventive Services Task Force recommends that women at average risk begin regular mammography screening at age 40 and continue every other year through age 74, and individuals at higher risk should consult their healthcare providers about earlier and/or additional screening. And whereas countless organizations, health systems, survivors, caregivers, and advocates work tirelessly to raise awareness, expand screening, address disparities, support patients and families, and advance research towards better treatment incurs. And whereas the 2025 Breast Cancer Awareness Month campaign encourages communities to reflect on my why, uplifting the personal reasons we take action, whether to honor survivors and thrivers, remember those we have lost, support loved ones currently in treatment, or champion equitable access to screening and care for all. And whereas Henry County recognizes the efforts of local providers and partners, including public health programs that offer no or low-cost breast and cervical cancer screening for eligible Georgians, helping to save lives through early detection and timely follow-up. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee England III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, does hereby declare October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourages all residents to learn the risk factors and signs of breast cancer and talk with a healthcare provider about appropriate screening, support friends, family members, neighbors, and coworkers affected by breast cancer, and participate in local awareness. The seventh day of October 2025. Thank you.
As well as some other parishioners to come forward if we could. Thank you.
And immediately following that, the county staff will also take a picture with the board.
Oh, is that what it is? I think JP has some pink Air Force.
Three, two, one. Thank y'all.
Next item on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing October as Community Planning Month.
I am pleased to also present a proclamation recognizing the month of October as Community Planning Month. Whereas change is a constant reality that shapes our cities, towns, suburbs, counties, rural areas, and professional planners provide critical guidance using data-driven insights and expertise to help communities make informed choices about how people live, work, and thrive. And whereas community planning encourages meaningful involvement by residents in shaping the future of their neighborhoods and ensures that local voices play an active role in decision-making. And whereas the success of planning depends on the leadership and vision of elected and appointed officials who champion excellence in both planning and plan implementation. And whereas October is recognized across the United States as National Community Planning Month, a time to highlight the importance of thoughtful planning in addressing issues such as housing, transportation, and land use. And whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to emphasize how planning builds stronger, more resilient communities and positions planners to help solve our most pressing challenges. And whereas this observance allows Henry County to recognize the dedication of its appointed planning commission members who contribute their time and expertise to improving our community. And whereas we also acknowledge the valuable work of professional community and regional planners and extend our gratitude for their continued commitment to public service in Henry County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee England III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, does hereby declare October 2025 as Community Planning Month in Henry County, Georgia, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, and encourages all citizens, public officials, and community leaders to recognize the importance of comprehensive planning and shaping a thriving, sustainable, and inclusive future for Henry County. So be it proclaimed this seventh day of October 2025. And we have our Planning Department Director Kama with a couple words for planning in Sony.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, citizens of Henry County. I'm just gonna say a few words and try to keep it short. So, this Friday, this past Friday, we actually hosted our inaugural Henry County Planning Collective Conference with the cities of McDonough, Stockbridge, and Locust Grove in attendance. During this collective, we ate good food and we had great conversations about collaboration and how the cities can better work together on our planning efforts. This wouldn't be possible without us having a strong team. Me, Kenta, and Tucson have been here for five and six years now, but we've amassed a really strong team of planners, young ladies that are very smart and capable. I like to call them our sorority, Pi Zeta. And they worked really hard on this, and Taylor took the lead to make this thing happen. So, we wouldn't be able to do all this if we weren't fully staffed. I don't think we've been fully staffed since Sherry was the county manager, was the planning director. So, with that being said, I'm just really proud of the effort. And I think we have some ZAB members here as well to take pictures with us. But I think this is a really good thing for the county. It is our inaugural one, so we will be trying to do it every year, and we're probably gonna make it bigger and better. So, thank you for your time and thank you for allowing us the resources to do this kind of stuff.
Next item on the, that was not on the agenda, but we're going to be adding to the agenda, is an update from Rocky Ramirez with regards to our SPOS and T-SPOS. Rocky, if you will come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of Henry County. Today, we're gonna provide an update, our monthly update, on our SPOS, capital, and transportation. And as you'll see, you'll see a lot of good things that the county is doing. So, let's go ahead and play the video.
Hello, Henry County. It's been six months since collections began on the county's SPOS 6 program back in April 2025. Since then, the county's SPOS department has started work on over two dozen projects. Let's take a look at some of what's happening.
The county broke ground on a new tax and tag office in Locust Grove. The Henry County Board of Commissioners held a groundbreaking ceremony on October 6 for the new building. It will be located next to the existing driver services office in Locust Grove. The Tax Commissioner's Office is excited to welcome residents to their new office when it opens in late 2026, weather permitting.
Out of the county's SPOS 5 program, construction is quickly progressing on the Henry County Aquatic Center here in McDonough. Construction so far has completed the indoor pools, and the outdoor slides that you see behind me are about 80% complete. Construction activity is quickly progressing on several aspects of the project, such as the building's exterior facade and interior drywall. The project remains on schedule to open next summer 2026, welcoming Henry County families to the county's first aquatic center and outdoor water park.
SPOS $6 are paying for road resurfacing throughout the county. Contractors have completed the resurfacing of Eagles Landing Parkway, Hudson Bridge Road, and East Lake Parkway. Roadwork is now underway on Locust Road in Locust Grove and Keys Ferry Road in Ola. Altogether, SPOS 6 is resurfacing nearly 200 county roads between now and spring 2027. The Rock Corrie Road widening project has broken ground in Stockbridge. Right now, motorists will notice the contractor is clearing trees along the corridor. After clearing work is complete, local utility companies will be able to begin relocating their facilities. The Rock Corrie Road widening project is jointly funded by federal dollars and transportation SPOS. Finally, the county has awarded design contracts for future road widening projects. These projects will not only widen the roadway, but also construct sidewalks within the vicinity to improve pedestrian mobility. Widening projects include Willow Lane, East Lake Road, Oak Grove Road, East Atlanta Road, Jodico Road, Hampton Locust Grove Road, and Patrick Henry Parkway. To learn more about all of the county's SPOS projects, visit our website at henrycountyspos.com.
That concludes our video. I don't know if any Commissioner has any questions. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the 6% agenda. If we have our If we have our county manager, Chair Matthews, please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, and Pillars of the Community. This is your consent agenda. The first item is under the county attorney. It is a resolution dissolving Henry First, Inc., which is the 501(c)(3). Under the county clerk, we have a resolution approving the 2026 BOC holiday schedule. Under extension services, we have a resolution requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Regents regarding cooperative extension. Under juvenile court, we have a resolution accepting a grant award in the amount of $106,365 from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to fund functional family therapy, FFT, for fiscal year '26. Under SPOS, stormwater transportation planning, we have a resolution approving agreements with the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia Civic Affairs Foundation to accept summer internship grants for SPOS, stormwater, and transportation planning. And then under SPOS, we have a resolution to perfect the record. It is a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 25-288 and authorizing the acquisition of 4,844.25 square feet of right-of-way, permanent easement of 4,584.70 square feet, and a driveway easement of 1,306.80 square feet in Land Lot 109 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19. This is for the Jonesboro Road widening parcel number 45, T-SPOS project located in District 5. Madam Chair and Board, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions from the board?
None.
None.
Chair and none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on the, as we move to the regular agenda, we have the Tax Commissioner Appeal Hearing. Stephanie, can you advise if the person that's appealing is present?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I'm Lynn Cardy, the Deputy Tax Commissioner. We're here today because Ms. Hernandez, the owner of Mike's Cafe, is requesting all interest, penalties, and fees to be refunded to her for the payment she made on the 2022 personal property taxes. According to our notes, Ms. Hernandez purchased the business in 2022, unaware that the previous owner still had outstanding personal property taxes due. In 2023, staff from the Tax Commissioner's Office visited the business and informed Ms. Hernandez, at that time, there were outstanding taxes due for the business from the previous owner. Per OCGA 45-5-1 and 2, all tangible personal properties used in a business is subject to annual ad valorem taxes based on the fair market value on January 1st of each year. A buyer of a business's assets may be responsible for the prior owner's delinquent personal property taxes as the taxes follow the assets. It is the buyer's responsibility to do their due diligence, to conduct extensive research, to uncover any liabilities, including liens against the business's personal property. Ms. Hernandez has since filed as a new owner with the assessor's office and has subsequently paid the outstanding back taxes due from the business. It is the opinion of our office that interest, penalties, and fees are not waived as it is the responsibility of the purchaser to do their due diligence regarding debt owed prior to purchasing a business.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Stephanie, can you make sure, let me know when, how the timer runs on the clock? Is the tax, is Ms. Monster Hernandez?
Yes, ma'am.
The representative? Okay, there, okay.
It is just an appeal hearing, so we have heard from the Tax Commissioner's side and allowed them 10 minutes, and now Ms. Hernandez will come forward and we'll set the timer again for 10 minutes. Ms. Hernandez?
Okay.
Good morning. I'm sorry, what am I supposed to say?
If you can just state the facts and why you would like the refund request. You don't have to take up 10 minutes, just however long you would like.
Okay. I can go ahead and proceed? Okay. The reason why I'm here is because I was paying the fees for Mike's Cafe, but the restaurant was under my name, under El Sartén Latino. So I went and go ahead and paid for my taxes fee, not knowing what Mike used to own. I know the Henry County went there and told me about it, but I say that was Mike's, you know, situation, and I didn't know at that time. But when I came here, I find out that I have to pay for that, so I went and go ahead and paid for that. But I was thinking it was not fair for me to pay late fees on Mike's charges for the taxes portion, because all the letters that used to come to our business, it was under his name, so I would never open Mike's, you know, letters and stuff, so I didn't know what was going on. Until I actually came to the city and tried to pay for my own ones, under my name, El Sartén Latino, that used to be my restaurant, but not Mike's Cafe.
Please hold just a second.
Okay.
Chair Harrell, I believe Ms. Hernandez is finished with her portion of the hearing. If you would like to close the hearing out and move on towards the vote.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't.
Ms. Hernandez is finished with her portion of the hearing. If you'd like to close out the hearing and move forward with the board to see if they have any questions and for a vote.
Okay. So the public hearing is closed. Is there any questions from the board?
I have one question for you. So when someone purchases a business, on their closing statement, isn't there, isn't there tax liens and all that had to be paid off when they, when they purchase a business?
On real property there is, however, how the businesses and the purchaser and the seller dictate for a business, that would be the purchaser's responsibility to make sure that all liens had been paid.
But shouldn't that have been brought forward by the closing attorney, though, to say these taxes are due on this property?
We, we're not aware of any closing.
Typically, I think that's the way it works on residential property as well.
Correct, and I'm not sure on how it works on a commercial. I don't know if there was a closing attorney at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I have just one question for the owner, just to know if there was any partnership at all in this business before you took it over solely. That's all I have, Chair.
Since this is an appeal hearing, if the owner could come back and respond, so that it will have a record.
Motion to either approve or deny.
She answered it maybe from the record. She did answer it, but it may not be on the record because she didn't come to the mic.
If we could have the tax, if Ms. Hernandez could come back forward, please?
So the question I had, was there a prior relationship with the previous owner, like a, in the ownership, partnership rather, in the business, or was he a sole owner and you purchased it from him and then took the ownership solely yourself?
I buy the restaurant from him. I, you know, he transferred over, I guess, I don't know. He didn't, I put my own name, so I changed everything under my name, but he never told me that he had to pay that money. So I wasn't aware, and all the letters always come to him. So I always hold the letters for him, but he never came back, and he changed his number and everything. I wasn't able to call him and say, hey, Mike, you have some letters coming through. For so long, I was holding those letters, until one day I just put it in the trash because they were there forever, and I never was able to talk to him. I have to find out myself coming over here.
So did you have a closing attorney when you did this transaction?
We had a notary. We did this through a notary. He prepared the paperwork for us, and we just signed. And I just, he did a lot of crazy stuff with this business, but, you know, slowly, I was finding out, operating without, without license permit for the whole year almost, prior of me having the business, so, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I'm good. Chair asked me to read the motion into the record, and then you can take a vote. It will be a motion to approve or deny the refund request of $1,765.40, which includes interest penalties and $30 in GED, FIFA fees. I would ask for a motion.
What is the amount?
The mo, you'll have to approve or deny.
The amount?
Oh, the amount, I'm sorry. $1,765.40, but that also includes interest penalties and a $30 fee.
Well, I move to deny the property tax appeal for that amount.
Please step forward.
And I'm second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Stephanie, does the motion carry?
Yes, ma'am. Unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is transportation planning. A resolution approving the adoption of the Henry County Connected Vehicle Technology Deployment Plan. Sam Baker.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. Henry County has been deploying connected vehicle technology for the last couple of years in cooperation with the Georgia Department of Transportation. This technology enables a vehicle to send a signal to a traffic light and change the light from red to green, and thus lets a car pass through a busy intersection faster. To date, we have deployed connected vehicle technology equipment at 34 of Henry County's busiest road intersections, and in 45 Henry County Fire Rescue Department's Emergency Response Vehicles. So that consists of our connected vehicle technology prototype to date. In 2024, the U.S. Department of Transportation gave us a federal grant called the SMART Grant to test this connected vehicle technology prototype to answer one key question, and that is, does connected vehicle technology help Henry County respond to emergencies faster? Now, we are not prepared to answer that question today as our team is still working on data collection, testing, and analysis, but it is my intention to come before this board and our community sometime around February 2026 to answer that very question and share the outcome of our data analysis. But in the meantime, I am pleased to report to you that we have come up with a plan how we're going to go about expanding the deployment of this technology from the prototype that we have to covering the entire Henry County, so that all the citizens of Henry County can benefit from the deployment of this technology. If and when this plan is adopted by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, the, this will be the first, and I repeat, the first, connected vehicle technology deployment plan developed and adopted by a community in the state of Georgia. And what community is that? Henry County, that is, leading the way. We retained a firm called P3 Mobility to develop this plan for us. I have here with me Mr. Jeremy Ward with P3 Mobility. I will now ask Mr. Ward to come forward and present to you the Henry County Connected Vehicle Technology Deployment Plan.
Thank you, Sam. Good morning, everyone. Today, I'm gonna give a brief overview of the Connected Vehicle Technology Deployment Plan. I'm gonna talk about why it's important and how it's gonna impact the community. The objective of the plan, as Sam said, is to take the system from the prototype that it is today and expand it across the entire county so it can impact as many vehicles and citizens as possible. The plan talks about many different aspects and tries to answer some key questions that I'm also gonna answer today, such as, why is Henry County considering the technology? What work went into creating the plan? How are we actually gonna spread the technology across the whole county? How is the community impacted? And how can we do all of that at minimal cost to Henry County? I came before you in January when we started the planning process, and I want to give a quick refresher on what the technology does. So connected vehicle, or CV, technology allows vehicles to communicate with other vehicles, traffic signals, and other entities. The United States Department of Transportation has developed this technology to create a common language so that these entities can speak to each other and understand each other. It's a key part of the future of transportation. Sam mentioned that we are currently testing with emergency vehicles, but there are many more use cases that have many benefits to focus on improving safety, reducing congestion, and improving overall response times. The United States Department of Transportation has released a nationwide Connected Vehicle Deployment Plan with a goal of equipping 85% of intersections in metro areas with this technology by 2036. That aligns with one we can all. That aligns with when we can also expect to see this technology adopted in new passenger vehicles that any citizen can buy. And this plan aligns Henry County with that national vision and positions them as a leader in Georgia. As a reminder, the SMART Grant program that is funding this prototype is a two-stage program. The second stage is a fif-, up to $15 million in grant funding with no local match required. And only entities that have received a Stage 1 grant are eligible to apply for the Stage 2 grant, so it uniquely positions Henry County in a, in a select pool of entities that can apply. The plan that we've developed is going to position Henry County as competitive within that pool of those who can apply. Over the last year, the team has performed an extensive data analysis of Henry County roads. We've done market research, and we've also engaged with a variety of local stakeholders. So we've talked with Henry County Administration, the Traffic Engineering Department, the Fire Department, the School District, the Chamber of Commerce, and also the Georgia Department of Transportation, who is a champion of this technology as well. Based on that plan, based on that work, we've developed a plan that's going to improve safety and traffic efficiency in Henry County while also positioning Henry County as a national leader in this transportation technology. So to summarize the plan, we're going to do three things. First, we're going to equip over 100 emergency vehicles with this technology so that they can respond to incidents faster and safer. Next, we're going to equip over 300 buses, school buses, within Henry County so that they're able to get children to school safer and on time. And lastly, we're going to enable this at all 200-plus signalized intersections within the county to help support those vehicles, as well as future adoption when this becomes available in passenger vehicles. We developed a four-phase approach that is going to target approximately 40 intersections for each phase. These phases were created by looking at historic traffic and crash volumes, as well as proximity to facilities such as schools and fire departments. By phasing the deployment, it allows benefits to go where they need to be as soon as possible, while also making the, the entire implementation more manageable and, and lower risk. In addition, we've also developed a communications and engagement strategy to help educate and inform the community on this technology. So we worked with local stakeholders to help develop three key messages, which are time saved equals lives saved, your family will be safer, and Henry County is a leader in CV technology. These messages are accompanied by a communications and engagement strategy that includes press releases, news articles, videos, public surveys, and engagement at local community events to further help the public embrace this technology and its benefits. One of the most important aspects of this plan is funding. The plan prioritizes an approach that will minimize or completely eliminate any local funding required to be provided by Henry County. We're going to start with the, that Stage 2 grant, which provides up to $15 million in no-match funding. That is going to be complemented by the Georgia Department of Transportation's Regional Connected Vehicle Deployment Program, which is going to cover 80% of the infrastructure costs. We think that that's going to take care of almost all of the, the funding that's required, but if additional funding is needed, we'll explore other federal and state grants, as well as public-private partnerships. We expect the overall project to cost in the range of $7 to $12 million, and that's going to cover all the equipment, installation, operations for a period of time, as well as the project management and the community engagement that I discussed previously. So what does this look like moving forward? Today, we're asking the board to adopt the Connected Vehicle Technology Deployment Plan. From there, we plan to apply for the Stage 2 SMART Grant, which is expected to be coming out later this fall. In parallel to that, we'll continue to operate the test system and continue to gather data and lessons learned. And we should expect to hear about Stage 2 grant award notifications early next year with that project kicking off later in the year, probably Q3. And if needed, if, if Henry County is not successful in this initial award, there is another window next year to reapply with further data and learnings from the prototype system. So in closing, the connected vehicle technology represents the future of transportation, and this plan helps lay the foundation for that future. Thank you for your time today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Uh, thank you for the presentation. So I know you just mentioned about the Stage 2 grant, so this is the first phase, and said if we're not awarded that, then we could apply the next year. But say we're not awarded that, what would be the financial impact to the county to, to implement the plan?
So, as Jeremy mentioned, we will try and apply for the grant, if not once, twice. If we don't get the SMART Grant, there are other federal programs also available, including the STBG grant, that's another federal grant program. If you don't get any federal money, potentially, we can talk about public-private partnership, working with Georgia DOT to see if state can pick up any cost. And in the worst-case scenario, we at least got a prototype consisting of 34 roadside units and 45 onboard units, taking advantage of the busiest part of Henry County. In the worst-case scenario, if you do not get to expand to entire Henry County, at least you have something that works.
So, so I guess my question is, so if, if we don't get the, the further grants, and we do have the, the prototype, if we wanted to expand on our own, what would be that financial impact? What's the proposed cost?
The dollar must stay the same, seven to 12 million. We hope that we will get outside funds to cover most of it. But that's the cost that is out there in writing. Potentially, T-Splus could be an option. But that's the last resort again.
Got you. No, I was just asking because, you know, with the state that we're in right now, with the federal government, I don't think we can rely on them as a measure to fund.
That's why I said, in the worst-case scenario, we at least have a connected vehicle technology prototype, covering the busiest part of the county. But we want to expand this to entire county so that everybody benefits.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
I have a question. I understand the need for the public safety vehicles to have this technology. What's the reasoning or thinking to have these installed in the school buses?
So that, we feel that emergency response is the most important reason. The technology, as Jeremy said, can be taken advantage of by others as well. And our stakeholders that we engaged felt that Henry County citizens may feel that their children get to school on time and can potentially benefit from this technology deployment as well.
Because my fear is having it and people utilizing it for non-emergency and using it because of inconvenience and not wanting to wait at a traffic light. So as opposed to the emergency vehicles being the ones that are using it when it's a true emergency. So that was just my reservations with just having it on vehicles other than public safety.
It's not part of a plan. When we get to it, we can decide whether we choose to move forward and invest the funds necessary to expand it to school buses as well. But I'm with you. Emergency response should be the highest priority, and then we, as a community, can decide whether we want to invest in other sectors.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
None.
We are asking you to adopt this plan.
No further questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the resolution in adoption of the Henry County Connected Vehicle Technology Deployment?
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Stephanie, does the motion carry?
Yes, ma'am, unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. MC-25-02, this is a public hearing.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and pillars of the Henry County community. Uh, the request before you is for a modification to zoning conditions for the Newberry subdivision located north of Mount Carmel Road. Property was rezoned from R3 to the current zoning of RS, residential suburban for a 55 and older, single-family and townhome development approved on January 20th of 2021. Uh, the applicant is seeking to modify the zoning conditions of the development regarding home and garage sizes to address attainability of these units. This was approved during a time in which a condition for, for larger homes was placed on many and all requests for rezoning. We have since kind of stepped away from that, from that mentality. Instead, having conditions regarding exterior materials and amenities and things like that. With all that being said, the request as proposed by the applicant would maintain the original intent of the home size condition, requiring a larger home size where adjacent to the neighboring Legends at Rowanshire subdivision, that is on the east side there. Additionally, the request would retain a two-car garage requirement for all detached single-family homes and add language regarding the townhome units. 30% of the townhomes to maintain a two-car garage. The balance to have a, may have a one-car garage with a two-car driveway. Again, primarily regarding home size and garages. A modification request would open up the conditions to any and all changes. Staff has taken the opportunity to update some of these conditions to better resemble the current standards and to add clarifying language to the standards of the subdivision as a whole. There are a lot of changes here shown in red, again, mostly just an update. Go through them a little bit slowly. Six, requiring a two-car garage for those single-family homes. Those townhomes allowing for a one-car garage. 30% shall maintain a two-car garage. And number seven there, a fire extinguisher and escape ladder installed on the Phase 3 townhomes. Phases 1 and 2 have already been permitted. Again, home size, reducing that from 2,500 square feet to 2,000, we're backing up to Legends of Rowanshire, as well as Hawthorne Ridge. Hawthorne Ridge to the west. Reducing the home size for the single-family to a minimum of 1,200 square feet. At least 25% to be 1,600, 25 to be at least a minimum of 2,000. And again, minimum home size, clarifying some language on the townhomes, putting a minimum home size of 1,350 square feet. Uh, with at least 30% of those maintaining a 2,000-square-foot home size. A lot, this subdivision has already been final-platted. Uh, the roads are already in. Some of the homes are already in. The applicant can provide details as far as what those numbers would look like. But with all that being said, staff does recommend approval of the request to modify the conditions of zoning of Resolution Number 21-30, with additional modifications as recommended by staff, with the updated conditions list presented. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, so, Stephanie, can you open it up for a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. If we can call the applicant forward first, we will set the timer for 10 minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Jordan. I'm with Hect Walker Jordan, PC. My firm and I represent NVR Inc. It's a nationwide home builder, also goes by the name of Ryan Holmes. This is one of several communities that is building out in Henry County currently. Ryan Holmes is the fourth-largest home builder in the country, and it is currently the home builder for the Newberry 55 and up targeted community in Henry County. With us today, this morning, is Jesse Clark and Aaron Van Dyke with Ryan Holmes. That would be available to answer any questions that I might not be able to answer for the board, if there are any. The Newberry subdivision is currently the only new 55 and up community under construction in Henry County. The subdivision has been final-platted in three of the phases. It's also planned for a fourth phase, totaling 349 homes. 217 of those homes will be single-family detached homes that start in the high 300s, but actually go to the mid 400s currently. It also will have 132 townhomes that are starting in the low 300s as well. The original owner and developer for this project that had it rezoned was Tim Jones Properties several years ago. As Kenta had mentioned, it was approved for rezoning in 2021, subject to 25 conditions, including conditions for minimum house sizes for the townhomes and the detached, uh, single-family homes. While most of these conditions are still very relevant and applicable and feasible to abide by, as the board knows that over the past several years, home costs and housing prices have increased significantly, as has the demand for smaller, more affordable homes, especially for seniors 55 and up. Again, we're here today asking just for the conditions relating to the home sizes be modified to be consistent or become consistent with the current market realities for Henry County seniors. Ryan Holmes entered into a contract to start building homes and buying them in 2023 for the Newberry subdivision, and in 2024, launched home sales. Since then, since February 2024, only about 80 homes have been sold of the 349, which is well below pace for the local market. This has caused a significant concern with the project viability stalling out and remaining unfinished if something's not done to be able to make these homes attainable and marketable for local seniors. The vast majority of potential home buyers inquiring about the Newberry subdivision are 55 and up Henry County residents who want to age in place for the rest of their lives in Henry County. They're wanting to conserve their retirement funds, of course, with the current economy, are on a fixed budget, and need that smaller, more affordable option in order to do that, and also in order to have less to maintain as they get older. The current conditions require, however, homes to be a minimum of 2,000 square feet and have two-car garages, making them less attainable and desirable for Henry County senior residents. There's two problems with that. The larger homes come with the higher price points, making them unaffordable for most of Henry County's senior population who want to downsize and conserve their retirement funds. And there's also maintenance concerns and preferences. Many seniors are wanting to downsize to homes that are easier to maintain, the older The older they get, the more they want to spend their time and concerns with other things rather than home maintenance. So that's a growing preference as well. Housing products for seniors in the metro Atlanta area have not been keeping up with this growing demand, including in Henry County. Ryan Holmes would like to help fulfill that demand, but is needing these modifications in order to do that. As you can see here, the proportion of Henry County residents that are fifty-five and up currently are twenty-seven percent of the population, which is planned to increase to twenty-nine percent by two thousand twenty-nine. Of that fifty-five and up population, only seventy-four percent, or I should say seventy-four percent of those residents are unable to afford the single-family homes that are offered right now at Newberry due to the current economic conditions. Sixty-five percent can't afford a townhome with these current zoning conditions. In order to do that, we're proposing a mixture of smaller, more affordable houses. There will still be the larger house models that are currently being offered, available in all phases, but we would like and need to include more affordable, smaller houses as well. The current mix has the vast majority of houses being required to have two thousand square foot minimum. Right now, you have the houses backing up to Rowanshire required to be a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet. That accounts for seven percent currently of the mix. We're proposing to mix that up to have fifty percent being a smaller model for residents to choose from, that would be twelve hundred to fourteen hundred square feet. Then you'd have another twenty-five percent being a mixture of medium-sized options from sixteen hundred to two thousand square feet, and then you'll still have twenty-five percent maintaining that two thousand minimum square foot size as well. For the townhomes, that would, we're asking to be able to provide seventy percent townhomes with a minimum of thirteen hundred and fifty square feet and still retain a minimum square footage of two thousand square feet for thirty percent of the townhomes. Along with that, for the smaller townhomes themselves, we're also requesting to modify the condition to allow for one-car garages for some of the smaller townhomes. Those one-car garages will have driveways that would be able to accommodate two full-size vehicles. That's a condition that staff has placed on the recommendation as well to make sure there's no parking issues. And for the townhomes, you would have two-car garages being thirty percent of that mixture still, with seventy percent being able to have the one-car garages for the smaller townhomes. Single-family homes will still have two-car garages. It's important to point out as well that these smaller homes that we're requesting will really only be mixed into the future phases, phase three and phase four. The current homes are in phase one, that come along to the bottom going to the right and in phase two. Again, only eighty homes have been sold, and the plan is to keep the larger of the homes, two thousand square foot homes, on the buffer of the existing homes in order to prevent any type of disparity in the home sizes. Additionally, along Rowanshire, those homes will still be a minimum of two thousand square feet, and we've also agreed for the single-family homes, abutting the Hawthorne subdivision, that those single-family homes will be a minimum of two thousand square feet as well. This is renderings of the current larger homes that are in the subdivision. You can see they're quite large, from two thousand square feet to twenty-seven thirty-nine, going all the way up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The townhomes themselves are quite large, almost twenty-two hundred square feet, going up to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The smaller homes that are being proposed, lower that make the homes more attainable, going all the way down to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the twelve hundred square foot homes and go up to fifteen hundred and thirty-three square feet for a little bit larger size. These are renderings of the midsize proposed homes that are in the sixteen hundred square foot range. Those start at three hundred and sixty thousand and would be going to three hundred and eighty-five thousand, so again, much more attainable than four hundred and fifty thousand that seniors would now have to pay to move in. And the larger townhomes would be thirteen hundred and fifty square feet to nearly sixteen hundred square feet. This subdivision is really inspired by the Sun City fifty-five and up subdivision in Peachtree City, and these modifications would still be consistent with the home sizes in Sun City. In fact, the smallest proposed home in this subdivision would still be larger than the smallest home in Sun City, which is only eleven hundred and nine square feet. This modification, again, would allow for more attainable housing for seniors who want to spend the rest of their lives in the county, and meeting this demand would also pave the way for this community to be built out. The staff has recommended approval for this proposal, and we would greatly appreciate your approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can now turn it over to those opposed, we will start the clock over at ten minutes if anybody would like to come forward and state their name for the record.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Margaret Avery. I just have really more questions about this development than opposition. Number one, why are we considering, if we're aging in place in Henry County, why are we considering in a fifty-five and older community townhomes? Because what we have to think of is when firefighters have to get these people out of the upstairs because they're bedridden. That's OJIs that we have to pay for. That's stuff that we have to think about as a county. Also, the steps, everything I see has steps going in it. If it's fifty-five and older, aging in place until death in this county, which, by the way, my mom, she worked for Henry County EMS in seventy-four, so nineteen seventy-four. So she's been here lifelong resident. My thought process is, are we making any accommodations to these homes or making it easy for them to accommodate later? For wheelchairs and such? Just a thought process for everybody to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak in opposition? Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm presently living in the Newberry community, and I guess our biggest concern is how it's going to affect the, our property value for the ones that are already living there.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kimberly Fant.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. The board will make comments. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak in opposition? I believe that concludes our public hearing. Chair.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. So before I turn it over to you, Commissioner Lewis, because I believe this is your district, I have a couple of questions or concerns. I am in favor of smallish square footage. I'm not in favor of one-car garages. I don't think it fits the character of the neighborhood. How many townhouses are there talking about building? And if we're talking about a fifty-five and older community, was there any consideration to do maybe cottage-style housing as opposed to townhomes?
Yes, so I can answer that real quick. This property, this subdivision, has zoning entitlement currently for townhomes. That was done in two thousand and one. So this modification request would not be changing unit counts, it would not be changing how many townhomes are in, how many single-family detached. Currently has that zoning entitlement for townhomes. Purpose of this modification is to have better attainability for some of these units, making them smaller, making them a little bit more affordable for these seniors as the applicant had presented. Without this modification, you know, this is the applicant's words, there was a kind of fear of stallout. So I hope that answers your question, Chair.
I mean, because I'm a fifty-five and older senior, and I'm not looking to do stairs. I mean, so I don't know who has this concept that people that are fifty-five and older want stairs. And I'm concerned, will the building materials be the same? And what does our fire, what does our fire department comment about the change? How does this impact the actual, original approval that we did on this development by building smaller-sized townhomes with one-car garages that you say that you build for fifty-five and older? I don't understand that part.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, pillars of the community. I am Chief Black Fire Marshal for Henry County. To answer both questions, the initial approval site development, fire department doesn't have any concerns, all that was addressed during the original approval. As far as the safety component of the multi-level homes, the fire service doesn't really have jurisdiction when it comes to residential and building construction, which is one of the reasons it's Fire Safety Month, which is October, focuses solely on residential fire safety. Obviously, we have inherent challenges when you talk about structures like this, but that's addressed during our initial training and certification as firefighters, as well as our continuing education for above-grade and below-grade fire tax. So again, the fire department's concerns were addressed during the initial approval, so there are no changes or added concerns on our part.
I would also like to add that one of staff's conditions is, you know, again, bringing this kind of development to current standards, especially when it comes to townhomes. One condition would require a five-pound fire extinguisher on, I believe, each floor of the unit, as well as an escape ladder on the second floor that has a sleeping unit. So that condition is not in place with the current conditions. That condition we replaced from phase three that is to be built.
Okay, all right. Well, Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, good morning, and thank you for that. There's a lot to unpack here, but first of all, just to kind of echo Madam Chair, I had some initial reservations when I heard it was going to be a modification, but actually after talking to the developer, this makes sense, and I'm going to tell you the reasons why it makes sense. And I'm going to specifically go to Ms. Fant. My very first question was about, you know, what it would do to property values. So I did want to hear from the developer, I wanted to ask about the price per square foot, what the average price per square foot in sales is right now.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Jesse Clark with NVR Ryan Holmes. That's a concern for us too, because this is a community that we want to continue selling, and it has our brand on it in perpetuity. One of the biggest risks for this project right now is it potentially stalling out.
Right.
And we are all aware of what happened with that with the last recession, when you have kind of a pipe farm of homes and that, what that does to property values. So that's the biggest concern. And then on the positive side of it, what we've noticed when we have a mix of homes is that appraisers actually appraise properties on a per-square-foot basis.
Correct.
So the value of these homes will be the same per square foot, it'll just be less home that people are purchasing. So when they apply that same per-square-foot number to the larger homes, it doesn't impact the value. So it's kind of commonplace to have a mix of home sizes. There was a, as planning staff noted, there's a period of time where a lot of jurisdictions just blanketed larger homes for all the community, and what we're seeing now is that there is no one-size-fits-all for fifty-five plus in particular, that there's a range of preferences and incomes as well as mobility. So fifty-five and plus, we're noticing some of those residents have grandkids that they want to keep on the upstairs, and they have their master on the main, and that's a preference for some of them, but not all of them. And for majority of homes that we have are single-family, and for those residents, we provide that option as well. And I'll just want to note too, so the townhomes for steps, you know, we are stuck with these townhomes at this point. We already platted the entire neighborhood, built out the roads, so townhomes are going to go in there either way. But as planning staff noted, this will actually improve the safety with the additional condition of condition number seven to add a fire extinguisher and stair escape on that second floor.
So all townhomes, do you have a master on main?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, that's what I want to know. Thank you. So once again, once we actually talked to the developer and got into the meat and potatoes, so to speak, it does make sense. So I thought that was interesting as well when it first came out. I know this was approved several years ago, but I thought it was interesting that, you know, townhomes for senior community, but when you say that every single townhome has a master on main, then it starts to make sense. That was one of my main concerns about this neighborhood stalling out, because we have a couple of neighborhoods in the district that did stall out after the recession, and you can literally tell what was built before and what was built after. And so I think the way that this is structured, it kind of protects the integrity of the entire development, you know, making sure that on the borders of the two neighboring neighborhoods that we keep it at, you know, a minimum of two thousand square feet. Just one thing I thought was very interesting, I just met with AARP, the McDonough AARP, about a month ago, and talking to a group of seniors. I actually talked about this modification specifically and, you know, told them what we were trying to do as far as senior housing, and the comment that I got from, it was a room of about sixty people, the comment I got from probably fifty-nine of the people was, oh, well, those are too big. When I said twelve hundred square feet, I said, oh, those are too big. And I thought that was just very, very interesting, kind of flies in what, you know, the types of approvals that we've had probably in the past decade. Most of the seniors in that room said they were looking for something under one thousand square feet. That's what they want. And so even when we're sitting here now talking about sixteen hundred to two thousand square feet or twelve hundred, sixteen hundred square feet, that's still bigger than what the seniors said, what they were looking for. So, you know, a couple of things that this does to me is it improves the affordability. So you're reducing prices, especially when you talk about price per square foot, some of these homes from sixty to eighty thousand, which makes it a lot more affordable for seniors, and also getting towards the lower square footages, that is actually what they're looking for. So we want to make sure that we maintain the integrity of a senior community and give them what they're looking for. So I think this fits with what we should be doing to make sure that we have affordable and housing that works for seniors. And with that being said, unless I have any other comments from my colleagues, I do move to approve the modification.
So I do have another comment or question. I guess I'm just struggling with the one-car garage component of it, and what is the resale, how does the resale value hold up to two-car garages? And Wilson, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson, did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, I had a couple of them. So then the original rezoning was the fifty-five and older community, was it approved with the original rezoning?
Yes, yes.
Was it a restricted fifty-five and older community? Was it a restricted 55 and older community?
Per conditions, it was age-marketed, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it's not restricted?
Correct.
So there's different codes and for restrictive, for as all the doorways had to be 3-0, and you had to have zero entrance and two, and then the bathrooms had to be designed different in other, right? Correct. But this is not a age-restricted community?
I do believe it is, despite what the conditions required at the time. I will also point out, Condition 28, as part of the original set of conditions, specified that it be, "Communities shall maintain compliance with federal laws authorizing age-restricted communities." So there is language in place to-
So moving forward, that they will be built under these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my other question, well, comment, so on the townhomes with seniors living in them, and we talked about the fire, and the Fire Marshal talked about the, the fire safety, but then you got to remember the EMS side. So if you got seniors sleeping on the second floor, and they have to have a EMS unit to come out to transport, getting those stretchers up, the steps to, to put the seniors on is difficult. So that, that's a big concern about having townhomes in a senior community.
Yes, sir, I completely understand that. The applicant did mention that the first floor for these townhomes do have the sleeping unit. I think the upper floor is kind of a bonus room, you know, maybe used for-
Well, then that gives the senior choice, either to sleep down in the lower floor, or they could sleep upstairs, right?
They would have that choice.
But to keep that from happening, we need to keep our seniors on the ground floor. And when you build them with bedrooms upstairs, they have an option to sleep there, and it makes it a little bit more difficult to transport and package these patients. But anyway, I'll, I'll yield to the Fire Marshal.
Yes, sir, we do, we do share those concerns, but like I mentioned earlier, unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of legality, legal, legal standing, but we, we rely heavily on community education and continuing training for our fire EMS, but it, it's definitely a challenge.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Madam Chair, as a point of order, you have a motion on the floor that either a second or discussion continue, or something, some action would be taken?
Okay, so we have a motion, okay, so we have a motion on the floor, is, is there a second?
I have a second, but I do want more discussion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Are there, are there any other questions?
I'll start.
So, question, the property in 2021, January that year, that was with Tim Jones' property when that originally passed, correct?
That was the original applicant, that's correct.
Okay. And what year did the current developer buy this from Tim Jones' property?
Applicant team is coming up to answer that question.
Good morning, my name's Aaron Van Dyke, I'm the Division Manager for Ryan Homes. Thank you for your time this morning. After the, after Mr. Jones rezoned the property, it was purchased with a developer, Scarborough Holdings, who currently holds the land, they've signed the application with us as well. I believe that was about six months after the rezoning, and then they started development work. We went vertical on our models and opened for sales in February of '23. So really, that was the first time we felt the market is when we actually opened for sales in February of '23. If that answers your question.
Yeah, so I got a follow-up question with that. At what point did y'all see the change in the market? You mentioned risk, market risk. At what point did y'all see that change for y'all? Because obviously, you were comfortable with the risk when y'all initially went vertical.
The more customers that we saw from Henry County and listened to them, the more we realized that we were a little bit out of balance, especially, not as much with the market at that time, but with exactly what Chairman Lewis said, which was that the size of our homes, and also many of the homes needing stairs to acquire the square footage, did not align with the goals that our customers were telling us coming in the doors. So we had to lower our prices severely to meet a, a segment of the market, to basically meet them where they were, because they did not want to pay for or need the stairs that were in the houses. But we had, we had this condition that had to meet us, and as the market continued to change, that option was no longer on the table. To give you an example, the new houses that we are proposing, every single, single-family detached home will have a first-floor owner's bedroom, and the majority of them that were displayed will not have a second floor on them. The second floor on the single-family detached was a requirement, it's very tough to get to a 2,000 to 2,500 square-foot house on one floor. So this is an opportunity for us to add a true ranch product to this community, which we think our buyers and our, and the residents are telling us that they want.
Okay, so I agree with you. And thanks for the changes to the plan. There's a reason for the questions, and I think it needs to be stated, is, I want it to be very clear, the risk that developers are taking is not the responsibility of this board. And because I foresee this moving forward being a point of contention on things that are already zoned. So, one, I agree for the changes y'all were willing to make, and working with Commissioner Lewis, just want to make sure this is not practice habit moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my, my question is for Fire Marshal. And my question is, is it more difficult, or how more difficult is it to retrieve a 55 and above person from a second floor than a 35-year-old from a second floor? Because it seems to be a concern about, I guess, 55 and above being upstairs, but we have residents in the community of all ages that sometimes the master isn't on the main, but it is upstairs. So is there a difference in the difficulty in getting a person that's senior as opposed to someone else?
Straight across the board, it's, it's a challenge, but it also, it's, it's not only age, because obviously, the, our seniors aren't necessarily able to help themselves or even help us, but it also has a lot to do with weight. We do have special equipment that we maintain in the fire service as far as stair chairs to allow us the ability to do it safer and quicker, but it, biggest thing, it's manpower-intensive, and we do get a lot of calls from private EMS services for a fire truck to show up for manpower assist, when they're bringing home patients from the hospitals or nursing homes or restrooms or wherever they're at, based on the challenges of that residential structure. So it's not just, we, we get it both ways, but the biggest thing is it's manpower-intensive, and we do have to maintain special equipment to make it safer and easier for us.
Okay.
And I, I guess my final comment before we vote is, if, if we don't do anything today, it's still gonna remain as it is right now, which is an approved subdivision from several years ago. So this is a modification, to me, that actually brings it up to our current standards and allows for better utilization by our senior community. So I, I think it's probably a win for both the board, the county, and also the developer as well, so, and the community where they're building these homes, so.
So I have one more comment.
Yes, sir.
I do support-
So, so before I call for the vote, I, I do have a final comment as well, and concern, is that when this, I was on the board when this development was approved. It was approved based on the, it was approved based on building a community that would fit the current character of what is in the neighborhood now. And now you want to change it, do some one-car garage townhomes, and to me, I think that just changes the character of what was originally voted on when this was passed. When you all purchased this property from whoever the previous owner was, you purchased it under what the current plan is. Now, I would maybe ask the question, put there be some consideration on the townhomes, that's a challenge for me to be in one-car garage, and I'm okay with smaller lot, smaller square-footage size, but I just want to make sure that it fits the character of the neighborhood, because I live in that neighborhood, and other people that live around us live in that neighborhood. And we want the character to remain the same. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I am a big supporter of community for seniors. I think seniors need to be in single-level homes. If this board considers approving this, I think they need to be thinking about, if you're going to use the townhome as senior living, them, them townhomes need to be sprinkled. And that's, that's all the comments I have.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor. All that oppose? Stephanie, my vote is no.
Okay, Chair, just to finalize the vote, it is 4-2-0 with you and Commissioner Wilson opposing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a ULDC AM-25-01.
Yes, good morning, once again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Pillars of the Henry County Community. The item before you is a request to change the Unified Land Development Code, the ULDC, and how it regulates front yard fences. Chapter 7, Section 70204 of the code would provide language for fences with an excerpt shown here. Current code would permit a front yard fence on a property zoned RA, residential agricultural, or on those properties outside of a subdivision. Front yard fence must first be reviewed and approved by an internal review committee, the Architecture Review Board, I'm sorry, Architecture Review Committee, as described in the asterisks that are at the bottom. Asterisk is present under the RA column, as well as the not within a subdivision column. Again, front yard fences only permitted RA or outside of a subdivision. The applicant has submitted a ULDC text amendment request to change the code section as shown here, essentially to allow a front yard fence request to be submitted and reviewed for all properties, no matter the zoning, no matter the subdivision status. Each zoning district does have zoning entitlement that differs from another district. For example, the RA zoning district is unique, and that would allow for agricultural-based activity, including keeping and raising of livestock. There are different standards for the R1, R2, all the way to the R5 zoning districts. The amendment as proposed would allow for a variety of fences of varied materials and varied heights to be erected on individual properties within a subdivision, which may potentially damage the character and quality of the established subdivision community. With the amendment as proposed, one lot may be permitted a chain-link fence, another a wrought iron fence, another a six-foot-tall wooden fence, solid wooden fence, to preserve the character of these existing subdivisions as best we can. Staff would recommend denial of the applicant's request as proposed to amend Section 70204B of the code as it relates to front yard fences. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. I think I will also add-
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request will have a collective toll of 10 minutes to address the board. Those in opposition of the request will likewise have 10 minutes collectively.
Chair, there is no one coming forward for in favor, if we can call a pause. So public hearing is flown. Are there any questions from the board? Let me just double-check, Chair, if you would, if, if there is no one here that would like to speak in opposition of this case, correct? Okay, thank you.
So I have, no questions from the board? Can I get a motion to support staff recommendation of denial?
Yes, I'm, I move to deny the ULDC amendment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If no further discussion, all in favor.
Chair, the vote was unanimous, in favor.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, I do have a couple of comments for today's meeting. On yesterday, Henry County, along with the City of Locust Grove and our SPOSS team, broke ground on the Locust Grove tag office, and so we are looking forward to delivering this project to the citizens on the southern half of the county. As a reminder, this was a SPOSS 6 project, so we're really excited about that. The next and final cleanup day is going to be on Saturday, October 25th. It's going to be located in District 3, Commissioner DeAngelo's district. Details will be available on our county website if you are interested in participating in that cleanup. As a reminder, early voting for the November 4th elections will begin on Tuesday, October 14th, and runs through October 31st. Specific times and locations can be found on the Henry County website, and the last day to register to vote in the November 4th municipal election would have been on yesterday, October 6th. The Stormwater Department is hosting a public meeting this Thursday, October 9th, at the Fairview Recreation Center to discuss topics such as Clean Water Act, Stormwater Management Best Practices, and permits and regulations. And then finally, on Thursday, October 30th, the county will host our annual trunk-or-treat and National Night Out at Echo Park Speedway. Details will be on the county website, and we look forward to having another eventful National Night Out and trunk-or-treat for our community. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Board, this ends my County Manager comments for today.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie, are there any, anyone signed up for public comment? So can I get a motion to approve the minutes for September 3rd regular scheduled board meeting?
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? The next upcoming meeting is at, October 21st, 2025, is a regular scheduled board meeting. November 4th, 2025, is a regular scheduled board meeting at 9:00 a.m. The October 21st meeting is at 6:30 p.m. November 4th is a tall VOC meeting at 6:00 p.m. on the planning and zoning matters. November 18th, a regular scheduled board meeting at 6:30 p.m. has been canceled, and um- And, um, can someone, uh, I'm not sure of the exact date, but does early voting start on October 14th or 15th? Can someone advise?
It's October 14th.
Okay, awesome. So just want to let everybody know that early voting starts October 14th. Election Day, of course, is, uh, November 4th. Uh, everyone have a great rest of the week. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.